I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, its one nation, united in its full, to equal justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening here and hello. This meeting is being recorded and audio and being recorded so everyone knows. And I'm going to start with approval of minutes.
I'll make sure.
Are there any corrections? Or comments? On papers and kind? Most. Motion passes, approval claims.
So moved.
Second. There any questions?
Did the water heater come any close to budget? I remember that's what our budget was or what we thought that might be for the elementary. The water heater.
Conversion or showing off all of them.
You got it.
Any longer conversion?
We put it down, we put it down over to FICO.
So the the copiers, Callie, can we just swap out a couple of years of how that worked?
We did. No. Yeah, well, every three years.
Okay.
We try to swap them out. So we swap out the most heavily used one, so which is the business office. And then wanted the elementary school and instead of taking, I asked them what they did with the old copiers. And they're like, oh, we just take them and junk them. And I'm like, not anymore. And so I kept the one that was in the business office and we actually replaced one at the elementary school. With those, I guess in the past what they've done is they would just take them and then, well, what do you guys do with them? And they're like, well, we just use them for parts. And I'm like, hmm. So I was like, no, no, I'll keep it. And then when it breaks, then it breaks and then you can have it for junk. I don't think they were super thrilled with that answer, but I think our primary, we teachers were super thrilled with thanks copiers they got.
Were we given, were we getting some sort of like decent credit back order?
Nope. We were getting no credit back. They were just kind of hauling away for you to do your service.
Recur suficed from.
Yeah, so we just had some of the football boys call it down to elementary school for us. So.
Might be interesting if they got to have a surplus equipment. You know, the others.
Um, the other ones that we had, the one that was there was like 15 years old and they don't even make parts for it anymore. That actually is garbage, but instead of garbaging it, we actually took it out. So Brooke has one. We're going to take it out there. So she has one out there so that she doesn't have to walk into the building to get stuff. Send a student into the building to get stuff. And then we told her when it breaks, it should. Also leave, but.
That's interesting to think about anymore.
Yeah, I figured we might clean them up until they were actually truly end of life.
Yeah.
Do we have an ongoing agreement on the traverse with Wolf that we had before with? Yep, okay. And it just looks a little weird now. They were actually bought the lease out and they still give us the payment amount for it. So we're just buying the lease out on the vehicle.
And yeah, the new sticker on this too. The new wall sticker.
Are there any other questions? Ron, did we say aye? Motion passing. And next we have public comment on non agenda item. We'll move on to communications to come to board. I have a few things sitting in front of me. There's a letter from the Chautauqua Fine Arts Council and it says, in essence, we are awarding your art program $500 to be used for student engagement and/or special projects within the arts. My understanding is they donated to all the schools in Chautauqua County. Julie Robertson at the Arts Council is doing a lot of really great things and outreach of the schools. So thank you so much to her. And I'll pass this around. And then I have a letter of resignation from James Childs and you might want to speak to that later, but we'll send the letter around now.
I'll speak to it on the agenda.
Okay. That's it. On the board chairs report, one thing that we need to address is our December board meeting. So as most of you know, we are required to have a board meeting every year at our other school. And usually traditionally we do that in the December board meeting. And we've often synced it up with when the elementary Christmas program is. The elementary Christmas program is actually on Thursday. Whereas our normal board meeting would fall on Tuesday, the 12th.
Tuesday, the 10th.
10th, 10th. So it's the 12th when the Christmas program is on that Thursday. So I wanted to find out what you all wanted to do, if you want to have it at noon on the 10th so we can have lunch on our regular board meeting day. So we can have lunch with the kids. And then you're welcome to come back on that Thursday for the matinee or program. Or would you like to, Thursday's not great, a great day for me. I have other obligations that day, but. What do you guys think? I know daytime's not really ideal for any of you, so doing it at night is also an option, but. We could also.
In the morning. It's at the tour. MSG everybody's coming in the morning at the 10th. That's it. That matinee and the MSG I legs coming that morning. And also, I'm sure you do have a district MFA on 10th over here, Day Museum around the town. So 200 kids here and most, some of these people are going to be involved with helping add out. So the campus rebook at noon.
Um, okay. So my suggestion would be to do either the 10th in the evening. Same kind as our normal board meeting, but at the elementary school or the 12th, then I will work around my complex.
Would you Tuesday, the 17th at lunch?
Do you have any problems? You're not going to be here. I won't be here. I'll have started radiation by then. I won't be here for either one. So not issues there. But like the bill paying and things like that, I'll just have to get approval to continue paying. Okay. What do you guys think? Do you like to be able to go to the matinee? Is that something that most of you can do if we do it on the Thursday? I can make either one work.
It's no difference. We're pretty flexible. Make it work.
What time is the program? 1 o'clock at that one? Could we do? An 11:30 board meeting? Would that give us enough time?
And last year we did start earlier. We started at 11.
We started.
Yeah, we did. We.
And have lunch, right?
Get to the lunch room and then get to the matinee.
Okay, okay. So 11 o'clock Thursday, the 12th. At the elementary school. Is everyone okay then? Okay. All right. And next, we have a student policy appeal matter and as we all know, students' right to privacy outweighs the public's right to know. So we are going to turn off the recording and we're going to ask everyone who's not on the board to and administrators to leave the room temporarily. So make yourself comfortable in the hallway or whatever and we'll come collect you when we're done. Thank you so much. Okay, thanks. We're going to commence recording right now. Is it early? Okay. We are recording and we don't have any emotions in you out of that question. So we are going to go ahead and move forward. Perfect. All right. Let's talk about the elementary. So the heat is on and working and we love it. Thanks again to Russ. We love having heat. Yep, it's no easy task, but we sure appreciate it. We, in fact, you probably have seen around town, we had another great session of window painting. And I feel like this year the quality of art was pretty impressive and also scary if you want to look at some of them. Some of them I was really actually kind of concerned about, but I didn't know which kid specifically painted what. So I maybe we're going to research that a little bit further, but. Somebody told me that it's like the 70 some year that they've done. Yeah, and I feel like they just get better every year, or maybe I just think they're cuter every year. I don't know.
Russ, did you paint on windows? Did you paint on windows?
Yeah. Did you ride your horse downtown? Okay, we're recording. So. Share it. Yeah. You can. So, so my old daughter, when, when we first moved here, she was so excited about window painting and she like pulled us out and I need to, I need some ideas for my window painting. And she came up with this idea that she was going to do pumpkin parts. It was like the pumpkin part store and she had this whole con going into it. Sounds like so Abby. And then I posted a picture on Facebook and I got a message from one of the judges saying, okay, we saw that and thought it was really great, but we thought an adult must have done it. We didn't give her the prize. Oh.
A deconstructed pumpkin.
Yeah, a deconstructed pumpkin. It's modern. Yeah. Pumpkin part store. Oh, it was on the parts store. Back when. We went to Abby, right? We had a wonderful red ribbon week and so Mrs. Bolt came down to the elementary school with some of her high school students and put on some different groups for our fourth through sixth graders, which was great, teaching them about how Detroit did. What was in different kinds of things like cigarettes, that kind of stuff. And the costumes this year were really great as well. It's every teacher's favorite week. We ended red ribbon week. Jamie loves it. She wants to do it again. Like she wishes there was another red ribbon week actually. But we are, and we ended with red ribbon week with Halloween. And had an assembly on Halloween too, and that, that went well and we didn't lose any children. So that's always a blessing. Another highlight just happened recently on yesterday. And we had our Veterans Day parade and a huge thank you to Marvin Brock. He always helps kind of lead the parade and the other veterans, but that really is such a special time. It's one of my favorite school events. And so the students always love it and we had the most beautiful weather this year. So we were thankful for the high school students in attendance. Do you guys have any questions on that? On our highlights. Okay. Our MTSS report, so we've had a round of yet meetings and we'll have another round of yet meetings, which reviews academic progress for our students that we're most concerned about before we head to Christmas break. And our third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grades are also busy mass testing. So it's a little bit different this year. This is, this replaced the SBA and so they have different windows and small tablets that they take instead of a cumulative exam at the end of the year. We've already gotten some results back, which I think will be great and help guide some instruction. We don't get to take the tests again, so it is final with the results that we get. But it's, it'll be, it'll, I think it'll feel really great to get one year under our belt of what to expect. We have parent teacher conferences coming up next week. And the book fair will follow parent teacher conferences as well. So Mandy Wright puts that on. So a big thanks to her. And Christmas programs, we always look forward to that. As you know, it's December 12th. And then I think the band, middle school band concert is the 16th. Yeah, so.
Seventeenth, Tuesday, the 17th.
Okay, perfect.
Fifth through eighth from the 17th.
Okay, perfect. And then we have a cooking class that's happening this Wednesday and that's quite popular with our students. They really have a good time. And our November assembly will be on November 26th. Right before week. If anybody would like to attend, there will always be some fun event. We were very thankful for Mr. Gould's help at our last Spirit Valley. He dressed up as the Longhorn. And he lived, which he was like, I think you were a little bit sad about maybe, but you didn't get to actually sing, but you got to lip sync to Jeremy. So he can do a repeat at the board meeting if requested. So. No, just that. Well, so. Do you guys have any questions? I did want to touch on, Mr. Gould will talk about it when he talks about the emergency crisis handbook that we're working on putting together, but today I attended a behavior threat assessment workshop in Great Falls with quite a few other administrators from around our region. And it was very beneficial just in terms of how to support our students that are in need of some more significant support than maybe we've seen in the past before. And also how to ensure that our schools stay safe. So we, it was really good. Yeah. And it definitely like gave lots of intake forms and how to approach challenging situations. And so we have a situation right now that we're dealing with at the elementary school that this is super pertinent information. And I believe like just maybe with the characteristics of our children and what they need, it will only become more pertinent as we continue. So it was really good. So stations, you'll probably get to hear about it. Yeah. Any questions? Okay, yep. Everybody. I first wanted to start off with giant thank yous. Thank you to Pat. And for helping me, we've been through a lot of busy and he has just rolled with whatever I told him or asked him and he put up with a lot in school. Thank you to Russ. We had so much going on and I could just, I knew he knew what was going on out there and he took care of me. And so along with them, I owe a few thank yous in general that I just want to say publicly. We always have Steve Woodhouse and Justin Cartwright on the clock out there. And I don't ever have to worry about the chain gang with football. Roger Axeman organizes that for me and it's, it's just nice to know those people are in place and they're happy to be there and they're willing and I couldn't do without them. And then volleyball, we just finished up a tournament here. And so without Joellen and Vicky Rachel, Alex Reed, Amanda Brown and J.C. Lindemann, along with a few others during the regular season, we couldn't have pulled it off. So we have great people in place to help us do things. And I appreciate Callie and Roxy and Connie for organizing me and putting up with me. It's a lot. We ended everything since I saw, seen you last, so after your last board meeting, we had state cross country in Missoula and we had six runners. Four girls and two boys. And thank you to Ross. They had a three. For leading them. It was, it was a great finish. It was a great year. And I'm very proud of them and they should be proud of themselves. Football, we went into quarterfinals. We hosted the first round here against San Ignatius. And we also hosted our quarterfinal game here against Skoby. And they have nothing to hang their heads up. It's always hard to end. I talked about this with one of the girls today. For almost everybody, you went down a loss, right? And it's always hard to come to the end, but they had a lot of grit and determination and had a great year. Volleyball ended also this last weekend. We pulled off an upset and we were the district champions in CJI. Our district, we went in ranked fourth and came out. We had to fight through a second championship and they came home with that trophy. And we made it into Saturday and were able to place fourth in the division of the Northern Sea. So they, they all had a great year and it was a very, very busy couple of weeks here. And it's sad to see it end, but it was a very proud end for all of them. And we are on to new. Middle school basketball is going right now. They will have a jamboree here Saturday. So if you really want to watch some seventh and eighth grade basketball, come on, there's six games in a row on Saturday here. And then high school can begin practice for basketball and wrestling on the 21st will be the first day of practice for them. You will have a quiet gym from them. I believe our first wrestling meet, you can come watch. I can remind you again, so it will be after your next board meeting. It will be December 19th and the first basketball game will be December 20th. So we are finishing and starting again. Do you have any questions for me? No, but thank you for all your work. You're welcome. It was, it was, I just was here. Everybody else just does their thing and. So thank you.
She did an extraordinary job. Lots of real positive comments from the folks that came. Really happy with the way the tournament, really almost without a hitch, pretty close. And hosting the football on Saturday and it was, it was really very great. It was a long couple of days, but it was sure a great great success for us as a school. Jamie has a lot to take credit for that.
Thank you. She does. She is so organized and makes it easy to help her. Yeah, she knows exactly what she needs from you. And yeah, it makes my life way easier, but and Connie and Roxy, like here's what I need. Like, okay, we can do that. Thank you. And without like two hours notice. Russ hears me on that. Yeah. She can do a couple of days of it and says, oh, but I need this right now.
I'm off in the booth and I go, don't run.
Yeah, much appreciated. She doesn't get that. Thank you. I don't know what it'll look like to be in B. We may not have to do that again for a while, but but I don't mind. It was a lot of great volleyball and I didn't get to watch all of it because we played so long volleyball that I kept running out the door. So I'd watched the football from back here for a while. And we're on to new. And so I just have a couple of recommendations I would like to make that I haven't made yet. I thought I'd done this one, but I kind of said I haven't, so I didn't. I would like to recommend Damon Gilbreth to be the winter host for our sports. He's done that for the past couple of years. He is a great help to me, a great asset. And I very much appreciate all that he does during those seasons. So it would be my recommendation to rehire Damon in this position.
So moved.
Any discussion? Alan, did we receive aye?
Aye.
Host. And then the one other position I don't think we've hired was middle school wrestling. I would like to recommend Damon Gilbreth to retain his position there as well. He's helped for a couple of years for that. He would like to do that again. Colby Klein would like to step aside from the middle school program for now. But Mr. Klotzer would like to join for this year and help. He's been in the morning and in the afternoons with some of the wrestlers, being willing to offer his expertise and which he has plenty of in that area. And he has been talking to Colby. He's been talking to the kids. He's been in there and he would like to be a part of the middle school program this year with Mr. Gilbreth. So it'd be my recommendation to hire Jeff Klotzer and Damon Gilbreth as our co-middle school wrestling coaches for the year, which begins in February-ish. A second. Did I hear a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any discussion? Alan, did we?
Aye.
Host. Motion passes. And that is all I have, I believe, unless you have any questions for me. Short and sweet kind of time. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. As we start off the report this evening, again, we, I always have the thank yous and Pat came on one day and we were kind of getting things going and had a kind of a busy time, but Josh from Northwest came over and was taking a football out and he came over. While he was out there, he went and got his truck. The next thing you know, we're doing branches and he found a power line that was kind of stripped bare. And I told the kids, do not get up in the tree because the first thing they'll want to do if they start falling is grab that. And it was a bare line and so he got it all taken care of and he, it was a great point to discover it right out. And you were there too, Brian. It was just, it was a point of discovery that he was glad he found it and got it taken care of that day and took out a whole bunch of tree. But he came over just in a moment's notice to get a football out and it turned into a situation that needed to be taken care of. City grew. They were around doing the leaves and of course they are getting ready to take the bleachers out. The, I don't know if they'll get them this week, but the person next. Kale helped on the field and I appreciate all of that. Jamie, I perfect. I mean, she did everything just right. And, and Callie knows this. It's big for the town. I mean, those people stay here and they go uptown and they visit and they stop and it's, it's huge for the town. She, she did a great job. And kudos to her. Told her that yesterday too. It, we never have to worry about, Callie just alluded that you don't have to worry about stuff. It's all organized. She just says, well, what are you doing here? And you get it. And, and it's not like a last minute type thing and it's always just laid out. So it's, it's perfect. Larry and Aiden, when you see them, they spend a lot of extra time playing in the gym and it's, it's really tough. They're here, like Larry, that one time, they were here till like 1:00 in the morning, making sure that gym was cleaned for the next day because it started right away. And so Larry and Aiden did a great job getting the gym cleaned up for the next event. And if you saw, they had a record of concessions and if you see the dumpster out there, you could tell that very well. And again, Larry and Aiden take care of the, if, if he wasn't here, I don't know what we'd do. Because he stays and, and I mean, it's 1:00 in the morning and the old guy's going home, you know? And so those two, those two are really an asset. Windows are in the gym. They were cleaned, cleaned right before, right before the big event. They weren't great. You can go upstairs, you can slide them and they work and they all work to perfection that they were bought. And so that was a great thing. They were put in the week before. Timing couldn't have been any better because we needed all of the air that we could get. As, as you all know, it was 900 degrees in there. And trying to get it cooled down. So that is all taken off the list. Placid just got the expansion tank that we've been waiting for to date. And he hopes to start on Thursday morning on the removal and the replacement of the water boiler downstairs. Bob has got the lining over there and as soon as the water boiler's in, he'll come and put the connect it up to the breaker panel. FICO is scheduled for the 25th of November to work on the air handler. They just got last the parts yesterday morning and put in the fluid strainer at the same time on the, by the pumps. So that's all scheduled November 25th, which is a Monday. And we're out partial of that week. So they'll be here for a couple of days working on those items and getting them put in and they get wobbled on the power over there when they're here. The strainer is one of those things that we've been waiting for. And it's going to be put in at the same time. They've got all the opinions and everything for that. High school heaters will be the first week to the second week of December. They've got all the components right now in Great Falls, awaiting the cabinets themselves. And they're hoping to have those on the 26th of November. So it'll take them a week to put them together. And as far as the flu goes on that project, Gary is lined up. Bill Brennan with Brennan Heating and Air Conditioning out of Great Falls. And they've got parts ordered and as soon as they're in, they will be out and start working on the major part of getting that done. They still have a couple of weeks of good weather and they understand that it's needed. So we'll start working on the flu at that time. It was tough to get. He worked with three other companies to try to get them to break away from what they were doing and, and he did. And he finally talked to Billy Brennan and he said, yeah, I could do that. So we're putting stuff away for the winter, getting everything kind of winterized and ready to go. Alan Metters, the electrical engineer, has been out and doing a final look through on the electrical panels. If everything goes correctly on the levy that we started that project for Northwest Energy. And then he allowed the plans updated as far as the electrical panels in the back. They actually took everything apart and mapped it out so that it'll be correct. And we do have the chamber down at the elementary. We have the chamber down at the elementary with people coming in.
The chamber.
Chamber Congress.
But when I tell it.
Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chamber for me first. Like the chamber.
Yeah, well, it's sponsored by the Chamber Congress. Yeah, they're, uh, sponsored by the Chamber Congress.
The Chamber.
Yeah. There you go. All right, there'll be a elementary.
Yes, they will be available, but the snowball will not be available.
Yeah, well.
Yes, it will be.
It's just not the same weekend.
Yeah, no, it's completed. We're in December this year and they're, they're in November for thirtieth. Yeah, that's on that last Saturday that we're out, uh, over Thanksgiving. November thirtieth.
Perfect.
And this is on the seventh.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just the Thanksgiving day.
Yeah.
Okay. Very special.
Um, C C B A is Tuesday at seven o'clock, nineteenth. Say that again, Tuesday, nineteenth. Questions?
Good. I have a couple of comments. One, uh, I think the football field looked amazing and the in zones were awesome. Um, and, uh, I was going to ask about the bathrooms or the work that Lantit was going to do in the plumbing up here. Can you get an update on that? Was he able to finish pretty much everything?
So, the, the urinals came in incorrectly. They were not the right urinals and they finally got those like a week and a half ago. And we're scheduled in with this project. Now that we're going to, I'm blending all that together.
Okay.
I'm on that. I'm, I, because I, I went in there and started tearing it apart. And that was right when football started and I've been after them and then I've got the metal and so we went to take one of the urinals to cut the holes in the metal and they're not, they're not the right ones. They're not going, they wouldn't work for the flow that he needed to go down into where he needed to. So we ordered them in fifty miles, so. Great.
Great.
Sure, it's not a curse.
Sure, it's not a curse. Yeah.
That's, uh.
Yeah.
Respond to that change.
Yeah, the, the chamber. My class really.
It is, it expands.
These are, yeah, I'm going to draft one.
Okay, Callie.
Okay. So, the blue sheets is the last two pages of blue sheets. Gives our updated, um, spending. And with, you know, sixty-nine percent less than our general, we're right on track. We should be, we're through our second quarter of our year. Um, so we're right on track there in both our high school and our elementary. Um, so I'm pretty excited about that, that we like, you know, last year at this time, we were, um, right around fifty percent. So we're doing this much better. So, that means we warm and fuzzy. I'm thrilled about that. Um, and then, um, I do, I did pass out the ballot to everyone. So, because I will be gone for the January and February board meeting, um, due to my schedule, I'll have surgery this Friday and then I'll start radiation. So I'll sit with the radiation and that'll be every day. So, as soon as I heal, I'll start radiation September eleventh. So, I will be out of the office and hopefully I can work, um, for billing on a lot of this stuff. Um, thanks to the advancement of computers and everything, but I wanted to have prepared what I could so that you guys could be in person. So this, this is the ballot that'll actually go out to district one. Um, and so it lists both your elementary, your elementary school at the top and your high school at the bottom. And I did run through, um, with Paul Taylor O P I, who's the head of the finance department at O P I, to make sure that my calculations were correct, so we wouldn't have any errors or anything like that. Um, and so the ballot reads, you know, the language, um, how the state likes you to have that there. And so the outline districts, Carter, Ben Lake, and the Neat will get a separate ballot that just lists the high school portion. I didn't feel like I needed to copy both of them in newspaper. So you just got the one, because the other districts will have just the one ballot. So we've got, as you see over there, our envelopes are all ordered, um, our notices are all ready to go. Um, so Connie can just send those out to Bethany in the paper and, um, post it at the post office when those dates come, if I'm not here. So, the election is all ready to go and we just have to certify the ballot. But I just wanted all of you to see it with the mail and everything, so we knew exactly what was going to be sent out.
Can I chime in on that?
Mm-hmm.
We met and talked about how to promote this and get the word out, um, so we're talking about trying to, like, being ready, being done and ready so we can hit the ground running with that in January. So, um, we met and talked about it and I put together an F A Q so that Callie could check all the factual information in it. Um, and then, like, we can give back to Bethany. And, um, you know, it's, it's really just the kinds of questions that we'll probably get, um, addressing those and then we can kind of use that for script to put together a video that we'll put up on Facebook.
So Roxy and I are meeting with Callie tomorrow at ten to verify some of that data. And then I was going to give Bethany a call. And we can start, we're going to start, um, asking about some, talking about some articles in the paper and that kind of thing. We discussed the video. We discussed about getting in front of some community groups. And we might come back to you and ask for some folks that maybe already are in those groups that are on the board to be able to give presentations at those community groups. Um, and yeah, so we're meeting tomorrow at ten to finalize. So thank you for those talking points. That's really good.
Sure.
Um, and then the only, Ms. Brooke Johnson was going to come tonight, but she was trying to get ready to leave for day day. Um, and I had told her I would help her organize it. Um, we do need volunteers for the F F A district, which is December tenth. Um, you do not have to be an expert in anything. Um, a lot of it is just either monitoring students, um, to make sure that they're, you know, fun, fully completing their competition or just filling out, um, worksheets or directing students to the right place. So. And the contest for that are mechanics, agronomy, and our vet science. So.
We're not doing electrical or any of that.
Well, mechanics.
Mechanics is the electrical.
Yeah. Yeah. And, but we're not doing meat like we did
Yeah.
in the past one. Yeah, we're not doing, we're just have the free competition. We don't have life thought this time.
Oh.
So we're just pared down to the free event. Because we got in a new district.
Yeah.
So it should be left student as well.
Right.
Um, so, but like if you wanted to volunteer for the vet science one, she, it comes with a sheet to tell you what the student needs to complete. So even if you don't know anything about vet science, you could definitely be a judge.
You said vet science, astronomy.
And mechanics.
Yeah.
So, and lots of the mechanic one is, um, just resetting the stuff back up. So if they had to wire a switch, you just have to unwire the switch for the next group. Somebody else will judge if they wired it correctly or not. We just need people to undo what they did to set up for the next group. So, little things like that. And then the last thing I have for you is we participate, um, with M U S, or, uh, M T S B A for our unemployment insurance. And in the past, and I looked, in the past, I never had to bring it to the board. But now they have a section in their multi-district agreement that they, it must be approved by the Board of Trustees that we participate in their unemployment insurance program. So, something changed this year. I'm not sure.
So we have to participate in there?
We don't have to participate in their unemployment, um, program. We can go with a different group for our unemployment insurance. This is the one we've always had. Uh, most schools in the States, um, go with the Montana Schools Unemployment Insurance Program. You could choose to go with, I guess, Montana State Fund or something. Um, but we get a good rate and they're easy to deal with and that's what we've always had. And I feel like they get back to us, you know, because we do have quite a few claims that we get filed. And Brenda was just here. Um, and with that, you know, M T S B A, um, insurance program, they, like, Brenda will come and help us through risk assessment, um, to hopefully minimize our risk. And we're right on the verge of getting our rate lowered because we've had so few, um, either work comp or unemployment, um, issues. So every time, because our work comp and unemployment, they're all kind of in the same group. I mean, there's M S G I A and M T S B A. I mean, they all kind of have these acronyms that O P I so much love.
So she's coming. That's the lady that's coming on the eighteenth.
Yep.
But Russ is aware too.
And so they all kind of work together, but the unemployment has this one little separate section that you could choose somebody else. Um, and so they want your board to approve that you do want to go with their group. So, might just be a recommendation.
So. Sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Host.
Okay.
Thanks, Callie.
Uh, me, I wanted to share that, uh, one of the targets, uh, I talked about for this school year that I wanted to increase with our middle school kids was service. And so, um, we were tickled and participated in the Veterans Day program, uh, yesterday. And we are already talking about ways we can expand upon that. And I would repeat, Marvin did an incredible job. And it was really nice. Our seniors walked onto the elementary school and walked in the parade with the elementary kids. And then we walked all the sevens through twelve, seven to elevens down to join the Veterans Day Park. And, and she and I have already taught Mrs. Brown about doing something else in addition to that. And it was, we were really glad to be a part of that and the veterans were gra- grateful to have us there. The other thing that's exciting that's happened that was covered in the, in the paper was that, in the press, was that we've started a Leo's Club. And, uh, Lions Club has been, um, really gracious, uh, to be partners with us. And Ms. Carly Vayou is sort of the school site sponsor, but, uh, the Lions Club members are coming to the meetings and they've already made up with the painting at, uh, Halloween. And, uh, they're already, um, they're, they're taken off. It's, it's pretty exciting. And, and one of the cool things about, we did a, a taster, if you will, we put out a note to the students, asking them about if they were interested in Leo's Club. And the thing I think that stuck out to me, what the students have said is that if you're going to be a National Arts Society, there's something you have to, to have to qualify with grades and such. Student council, you have to be in election. Well, Leo's Club is something you can just do if you, if you're going to perform service. And I've been really tickled with the number of kids that have been coming to the meetings and have signed up. So it's, I think that's a real, it's a real plus. It's, it's an exciting kind of a, uh, something new for us that we've started in middle school and high school.
When did we stop doing Leo's Club?
Well, it's interesting because last school year, it was in the handbook. It said something about Leo's Club. Then I asked a couple of questions and, and I, the three or four adults that worked in this building said, well, we used to have them. We used to, well, then, uh, we, we ended up really took it out. Yeah, so anyway.
They tried for like a year at Leo's Club, but like Logan was like a top one.
Yeah, because I, we have Leo's.
So, um, our Leo's Club president went to the chamber, um, uh.
We had a, a Montana Economic Development Association, like, re- assessment review, so we, yeah.
So she came on behalf of the club and spoke and, uh, uh, Lucy and it was, it was great. I mean, so, anyway, we're, I, I'm really excited about the fact that they've gotten off the ground and there's some good energy, positive energy about that as well. So bravo to them. Um, I am, I know next up on the agenda is committee reports. I did finally have a chance to look at that, the revision of the early grad policy. So I have a draft copy. I brought some with me in case members of the committee want to look at it. We, at some upcoming meeting, recall that, um, we were first given information about early graduates that, uh, we could get A and B funding for a student that finished six semesters. When in fact, what the, the interpretation we got of the, or initially got of that law was incorrect. So actually we can get funding for a student who would graduate, finish their high school degree after seven semesters. So we had to adjust slightly. It's only, only so, a little bit slightly, uh, but I'm ready to discuss that when we're able. Um, I want to share that the Fall Band Choir, High School Band Choir Concert was October twenty-ninth. And Mr. Lemington lived up to his billing. Um, really did an incredible job. The kids looked great. And, um, it was a fantastic program. I was really excited because my daughter and her boyfriend were able to be here, which is kind of cool. But it was, it was really spectacular. And, um, it, it, you know, it bodes well for our music program in the middle school and high school and elementary school for that matter, moving forward. Um, there's lots, again, lots of real positive energy around our music program. Um, wanted to give you a heads up that the senior class would like to come before the board at the December meeting. I did point out to them, we, we'd like to get them having during the school day, uh, to, to request of you their consideration for the overnight senior trip. So they're putting those details together and I would, um, I'll work with you on that and include that on the agenda, but that will probably come to you in December. Um, Roxy and I met and we had a scrub of the calendar to discover that we would like to request a change to our winter. We're about to have our fall parent teacher conferences next week, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. That's the list of new year, as Roxy also pointed out. Um, but when we looked at the winter dates, we recognized that it was not convenient for the elementary school because it wasn't at a, at a time within her tri- second trimester. And I don't know, I honestly don't have a good explanation as to why. We, I think we ended there because of the basketball tournaments. And it was, it, we just sort of, I think we set it down, but we didn't pay as much attention. And we voted on the calendar. But we would like to kindly request of the board to move our winter parent conferences from the ten, eleven of Feb to the ten, eleven and twelve, excuse me, of March. Ten, eleven, twelve of Feb to ten, eleven, twelve of March. And what we would do, as is our practice, like next week, we have conferences Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We don't have school on Friday. In February, right now, if you look at the school calendar, we don't, we have, we have the conferences on paper. It says ten, eleven, twelve. And then Valentine's Day, as it turns out, we wouldn't have school. We would just shift that whole thing to March. So we're not adding an extra day when we don't have school. We're just slightly moving it. The other thing to point out is that that February day, like the fourteenth, is the first of three consecutive Fridays we wouldn't have school. Because we don't have school on the weekend of the district and, and, uh, divisional basketball tournaments. So it also spreads out another day we don't have school, moves it to March. Um, and it's better suited for, it's not quite as good for that middle school, high school, but we also, I felt strongly that we need to have it at the same time.
Yeah.
I think that's more convenient for parents. It's a, it's a better foot forward for us as a school district if we're both, we're, you know, unified by, by hosting the conferences. So, we decided we would move ours as well. So I would request of the board, I would kindly recommend that we move our winter parent conferences from February ten, eleven, and twelve to March, ten, eleven, and twelve, which includes the Friday of that week, the fourteenth, in March as a non-schooling day. So move.
So that's great.
Are, is the staff in high school and elementary, is everybody good with it?
You surveyed your staff. Um, we, we have a staff meeting tomorrow, but I'm, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent confident they're not going to have an issue with it. It's wild around that time with the, with the, the tournaments anyway. Um, and again, it's, it's not quite as convenient in comparison to our, where our, uh, end of quarter is, but it, there's still, the hope would be that by having those conferences then, there's still lots of time for a parent and a student to make some corrections with their academics to improve their grades before the end of the year.
Can I hear you second, Jamie?
Yeah.
Any other discussion about? Hey, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Host.
Thank you so much. Um, we also, like the elementary school, we've begun the mask testing, which is again new for us. So Mr. Rayers and, uh, Mr. Gilbreth are working with that with middle school kids. And, um, I haven't seen the results back yet, but we're just dipping our toe in the water with that for the middle school. So stay tuned about that. As Roxy mentioned, in the big picture, things looking forward, we continue to work on the emergency handbook. And we've mentioned M S G I A earlier. They are giving, I, I've sent our emergency handbook to them. We're, we're about ninety percent finished with the revisions and wordsmithing we have done. Um, Roxy went to the assessment training today. M S G I A has given those policies a scrub. And, um, again, I'm still maybe a month or two away from bringing it back to you, but we want it to be well-written and not just quickly rushed and give you something that have to change it again. So, um, that's still a work in progress, but again, with her training and, and the things that she learned today, we will make those adjustments and come back to you about that. Um, we're up to our, we're going to be up to our eyeballs again with accreditation, but it won't, it won't be as, as, uh, intense as it was last year. I, I've been doing online training already and, uh, I'm going to update Roxy on that in the coming days. And we may do some hours next week when we don't have school, um, to begin that process, which is going to be due, I think, at the end of Feb, end of February. Okay? And the other thing I had, I started today, um, I believe, and I need to check this out, because I believe on our website, Callie, I'm listed as a Title IX coordinator. If we're, if I'm not, I need to be apparently. I, I learned that today. So I started the timeline training. It's, it's an annual thing we, uh, we have to do. And last year I came to the board and asked for, uh, that designation. And I think we have, we agreed so at, at last year's board meeting, at a board meeting last year. And so I began that training again today. And some of that material has to be posted on our website and, um, I have to be identified as that time over the weekend. So I stayed with that today. And there are some dates of note on the bottom of this report, which I'll send out to you tomorrow, which includes our staff Christmas party, which is on December thirteenth. We'd love to have you join us. And that is all I have to report.
What's this?
Did you? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just, when's the staff party again?
December thirteenth, Friday, December thirteenth.
Thank you.
We have a P I R day that day. We're going to be doing the teamwork building, um, thing, which is kind of cool on the thirteenth. It'll be from five thirty to eight at the bowling alley, absolutely. It'll be from five thirty to eight at the Bolnelli, absolutely.
Did you have anything fantastic to report on about MSL?
Did I have anything to report about MSL? So I did attend, Joel and I attended MSL in October. And it did, I would admit that it surpassed my expectations, I was a little bit, um, concerned that it was gonna be a little underwhelming, but honestly, there was, the workshops that they had available, I thought were quite good. Um, one of the interesting sessions, it was kind of mind-boggling, was the hour and a half or so they talked about, you know, coming legislative session. And, um, I think we'll have some more things to report, remember that this is a version of what the school administrators in Montana and the Montana School Board Association feels is coming to the, the session, which includes some, some challenge, some things thinking about funding and, um, the way we approach funding and the whole concept of what the state of Montana has done with A and B. And they're looking at how, how to reshape, uh, that funding structure. And, um, so that, that's pretty fascinating stuff and it's all speculation at this point, right? Um, some of the discussion about the, um, the out-of-district students who live out of district, who are now coming to school here though, um, uh, whether or not they're gonna be addressing that, that whole law that went into place that we're about to, we're starting collecting money in the spring of twenty twenty-five, right, for the first time. So.
Well, and we have to pay.
And we, we have to pay too, cause we have students who are out of, or reside going to district, out of, going to schools outside of our district as well. So, um, I guess those are the, I mean, the funding thing was a big, was kind of a.
Yeah, one thing that, um, I took from that was just that they think they, they, they recognize that there's a big gap with inflationary increases not keeping up. And, um, the way they think they're gonna make up for that is by increasing the quality educator payment. So it's kind of like saying you have to raise your teacher pay. Like we want it, we want to give you more money, but we want it to come in the form of, well, we want you to maintain a certain level of salaries, which we've already, you already do.
Yeah, we already do to get the quality educator payment and so they want to prioritize that, but it's also, you know, it's funding that's meant for everything, but it's coming in that format. Because they feel like that, um.
True.
Um, they feel like it incentivizes staffing and things like that, whereas when you have A and B, well, okay, so the problem everyone has is if you have, um, over the allotted number of kids in an elementary class, for instance, and you have to have two teachers. And then maybe you lose two kids in A and B, you're only losing two kids worth of funding, but you have to.
Some keep that as a teacher.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, so they think that putting it in form of quality educator payment, you can make that even out a little.
Yeah, because our student, student enrollment numbers are going down.
Right.
Our costs are actually going down.
Yeah, right on like a bubble. And I shared that document, I, with you from Rob Watson, he gave me like a projected idea of what that quality educator payment would look like for our district if it works and rolls through, so we have, Kelly, I have that.
They're, they're talking about the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year.
Yeah.
When these things, I mean, there's conversations are gonna be had about school funding, but it wouldn't really impact school districts for a couple more years.
And it's still happening.
Because the quality study, the ten-year, cause that, that's what the state of Montana set up, the ten-year cycle is about to, to come into effect in two years, so any impact would not be realized until then. So.
So the other thing, the other takeaway I had, um, is just, you know, like when I first joined the board, NTSBA was doing more regional trainings and things like that. And so much of that has gone online and they do, they'll, they'll like, they were recognizing, giving awards out to certain school districts where they've had every single board member go through a certain amount of training that's available on NTSBA's website. And, um, not that I wanna force feed anyone those trainings, but it's probably all really good information. And I just wanna make sure, I think we need to do a better job of, of onboarding the board members and making sure you're aware of the resources that are out there and know where to go find that information, so I kind of wanna do a little work to make sure that we just have a good, you know, information packet available and we bring on more members and make sure you know where to find that training, it's just a lot of really good information about school funding and stuff like that, so. We're on that.
So I, you know, all in all, I felt, I think it's probably worth a lot for us to, to go and connect with people and be a part of that, so. Yeah, so thanks for that opportunity. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So we have committee reports, uh, we, we haven't had any committee meetings. Um, or meetings, we didn't know the name, committee meetings, we're gonna hold the next one.
Do we, do we wanna hold a policy committee over that, what we discussed tonight and I got early graduation, that one, early graduation?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I'd like everyone to think on that for a little bit and maybe come up with compelling alternative if you think it should be changed. And then maybe we consider meeting about it.
We should go to the committee first, though, Joel.
What's that?
The committee should talk about it, though. Let's start with her.
Yeah, and you said it's curricular, but I think it's actually the policy committee, but maybe it's both in this case.
Could be. But it should be talked about.
Yeah, I just, I just. I guess I wanna give people some time to think about it and come up with some ideas on how it should be changed, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Rather than just assigning it to the policy committee to make a change, cause I, I guess I'm not, some of us aren't convinced that we should change it at this point. But I'm open to ideas. So.
Changing with your contacts with the, within our district, athletic district and such, we could probably get a sampling of what some other schools are, are doing, just as we can, so we can shop with them a little bit.
You can pull it up right on the MTSBA, like, involve school policy.
Okay.
And see what they have.
So that, that's information and the board's gonna have a discussion about that, that would be, we're then looking at to see how, yeah.
So I guess what I'm saying is, yeah, we probably should talk about it, but let's.
Schedule it after, like, the December meeting, maybe.
Yeah.
We have, we can have more time to do some.
I'll, I'll make a note so we don't, just put it on the back burner, I'll put it on future. Okay.
Okay.
Abby. Personnel resignation, so you wanted to.
So, yes, thank you, so Joel had sent around a letter earlier, um, it was a sudden resignation of Mr. James Childs, he's a parent here in the high school, literally came in and resigned and was gone that day, of course, last Friday. And there was a family matter that he had to tend to and felt like it wasn't a gone, you know, absence, leave of absence sort of situation, that he had to basically go back home. And so, um, unfortunately, I would ask the board to accept his resignation.
You don't need a motion. Okay, you, you accepted that.
I accepted his resignation. Uh, staff hiring, uh, Julie Robertson, we talked about the, the money that the art council gave us earlier. And she would like to, she has a full-time job, but she's really, um, been very supportive of our program in the, in the time I've been here and she's working with our art club. She's been approved, she was just our volunteer, uh, our, uh, coach for cheerleaders this fall. But she'd like to sub when it's, if, if Ms. Diskey is gonna be gone and knows in advance, she'd like to be considered as a sub. And so she'd like your consideration for that hiring when it's necessary.
So moved. Thanks.
Any discussion? Um, favor say aye. Hosts? Roger Hesse.
I mentioned, uh, James Childs before, um, his resignation, but we also, um, in the same time, we have lots of kids who need support, so I would ask your, uh, I would like to recommend the hire of a resource aide, um, for the, our high school, middle school resource room.
So moved.
Oh, no.
No.
Okay, so we can, but there's a personal, a personal privacy situation, we're not mentioning the name. Um, everyone in the board has been informed in advance of, of the information you should hire this person, so.
I'm so sorry. I said never, this is what you, Kelly, sorry.
Sorry, Kelly, was not being right.
So sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
But you're all aware of the situation, I believe, and do, do we need to hire somebody to replace Mr. Trump?
So we will, I've mentioned it, yeah, we will advertise, yes.
We've had this provision advertised for a year.
Yeah. So moved.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Special. Um, people say aye.
Aye.
I'm host. Is that right? Um, future agenda items, policy. Meeting, if moved, and December meeting, December meeting moved, yeah. December twelfth.
I don't want, I don't want.
At the elementary, at the elementary.
Ooh.
We can get the talking points for the bond, are, are you gonna, would you email them out?
I can even, yeah, I emailed them to Brandt and them, but I haven't emailed the whole board, I will do that.
We're gonna make those.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Just when they're finalized, it's great.
We're filling in some numbers, really, some of the lesson about.
We're.
It'd be great to have everyone to put, so. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Sorry.
Thank you.